I'm here to try to move this forward. I'm Carol Hagen. Can I get everybody happy?
Is the mic on? Anne, Anne, we're not quite sure the mic is still on.
It's the button towards you, Anne. The button on top.
Yes, and Anne, Anne, I would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So when you finish, I just want to jump in. Okay. Town Council Joint Work Session with Coastal Resources Management Council Tuesday, May 31st at 6:15. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Thank you, Anne. It wouldn't be a Town Council meeting without the pledge. It's our first joint meeting together with some new members, and I'd like to welcome everyone to Town of South Kingston Town Chambers. So if we could just do some announcements, only because the TV cameras probably cannot see, you know, some of the name tags. And I will start, and then I will defer to Town Council to my left, and then all the way around. Is that okay? Okay. Ella Whaley, Town Council President.
Carol Hagan-Mackenty, Town Council Vice President.
Jim O'Neill, Town Councilman, South Kingston.
Mary Polietti.
Kathy Fogarty, Town Council.
Raymond Coia, CRMC member.
Donald Gomez, CRMC.
Paul Lamont, CRMC Vice Chair.
Ryan Goldman, CRMC Legal Counsel.
Anne Livingston, CRMC Chair.
Tony Afania, CRMC member.
Mike Hudner, CRMC member.
Janet Coy, CRMC member.
Bruce Dawson, CRMC member.
Steve Alfred, Town Manager in South Kingston.
And at this time, Anne, I'd like to turn it back over to you, and then maybe Steve can give us a brief history of where, what has happened in the past, and how we got to where we are today.
Well, I'm not going to give a brief history. I'm just going to do more.
No, after you finish, Steve would like to give a brief history. Steve Alfred, our Town Manager. So, welcome. I don't think she heard me. Anne, Anne, maybe I'm not speaking loud enough. If you would like to address the audience?
I wanted to say what I said, which is that I hope we can come to a solution that's best for everyone, and seems so difficult, and that's our goal. Obviously, the four of us who are new are trying to get up to speed on the whole issue. But I told that since the last one of these meetings, there happens progress. And after Steve makes his statement, I would like to have a chat with him.
Thank you.
You ready for me?
Sure.
Let me start out by saying, I'm Steve Alfred, the Town Manager. And at the last meeting of the Coastal Resource Management Council on May 4th, at the end of that meeting, the then-Chair Decoyan requested a follow-up meeting to be scheduled, which was scheduled for this evening. The intent of the Chair at that time was to provide an update as to what steps the coastal staff and the town staff had made in terms of being able to provide protection to Mattoonik Beach Road, as well as dealing with other issues that are ongoing. So what I'd like to do at this time is just to advise the councils as to the steps that we have taken. The town staff has met with the coastal staff on three occasions since advancing plans to protect Mattoonik Beach Road and to address the public health and safety concerns, as well as the private property concerns within the eight parcels that have been identified in the report from April 20th that was prepared by the coastal staff. There's really two independent, yet related, program initiatives which the town staff is working with coastal staff on at this point. The first initiative is the town staff is determining how will we obtain the Coastal Resource Management Council's assent to address the public safety concerns associated with protection of the road and the public safety in that area. Those meetings have been held, in fact, in the April 20th report. The Director indicated that under Section 180.1 Emergency Assents, the town could provide an application under the Catastrophic Storm Assents, which would provide the town with an opportunity to be able to protect the road if catastrophic events were to occur. In fact, what I've placed before each of the council members this evening are three separate maps to make sure that we're all talking about the same issues. The first map, which is documented as Shoreline Protection Alignment, is what we're looking at under the Section 180.1 Emergency Assent Application. Where working staff is working with the coastal staff to be able to prepare the application for the Executive Director's signature under that section. Essentially, there's an area of approximately 675 feet, which is of grave concern to the town. At this point, and in fact, the last map in that package that I provided you is a picture of the carpenter lot. And that carpenter lot, what you're seeing there with that picture is showing what the beachfront looks like at this point. Where the fence is shown on the picture is approximately 10 to 15 feet from where the head wall of the beach is at this point. Our concern, obviously, is that with continued erosion on that beachfront, once it reaches the fence line, it will be into Mattoonik Beach Road, and it jeopardizes the public safety. Not only would we lose a water line that's there, but we would also lose the utilities, all of the aerial lines for electric, fire alarm, telephone, and cable. Plus, we would lose access to the approximately 240 year-round residential structures and 256 seasonal structures. So the objective at this point is to come up with a plan for shoreline protection alignment within that 675 feet, and receive coastal's approval to be able to, one, deal with where the solid line is, the solid red line, which is approximately 200 feet, to be able to do Phase 1, which would be the installation of a armor-stone rubble mound seawall. The town at this point has gone out for proposals, proposals we received last night, last week in marine engineering concerns, to be able to provide the design detail necessary for the application to move through that process. Our concern in presenting this is that this is really a catastrophic event for Phases 2 or 3 to be completed, because as you can see with the dotted line, it would be going through what the existing structures are in the Mattoonik Business District at this time. The dotted line also going to the east goes out to an existing bulkhead that is there. So essentially, what we're looking at is that 675 to 700 feet of being able to provide for a hardened surface to protect the road under this application for the emergency ascent. That's moving through process. The staffs are communicating. I don't see difficulty with that moving forward. We have also had discussions with the State Department of Transportation since Mattoonik Beach Road is a federal aid highway for funding support to be able to complete that construction for the Phase 1 installation. And again, the remaining sections, we have no immediate plans to be able to install those, and hopefully, we will never have to install those, where the buildings that exist now remain in place and be protected from further erosion. That brings us to the second action item that the town staff is involved with, and that's identifying and evaluating three options identified to address protection of private property. The protection of the private property is really shown on the second map of what I provided to you, which shows a shoreline reclassification map. That shoreline reclassification map just simply shows the same area, but shows that the dotted line would be in front of the buildings, and that the consideration would be provided to allow the private property owners with an opportunity to be able to protect their property by installing a hardened beachfront. In discussions with coastal staff, as well as after review of the detail provided in their April 14th, April 20th report, we looked at three different options. One was a Section 200 title in coastal pond waters change from a Type 1 to a Type 2. We understand from coastal staff that they are opposed to that option, and we agree that that would not be the preferred option at this time. The second would be under Section 130 with a special exception. The town would request a special exception to allow for construction of the man-made shoreline protection. Again, we've talked with coastal staff. Coastal staff has indicated, both verbally and within their reports, that they are opposed to a special exception for this as well. The third option is one which is contained within the staff's report, but not recommended. And that is, under Section 220 of the Red Book, would be a shoreline features reclassification of the eight parcels that are under consideration, a reclassification from headland bluffs and cliffs to a man-made shoreline. I repeat that the coastal staff has indicated that the two options for long-term solution to the Mattoonik erosion issues are twofold. One is inland migration, and the second option presented was... For the life of me, I've lost the second component. Ray?
The recommendations were to retreat and send...
Can you give him that microphone?
We don't see, from a municipal perspective, that either of those two options are viable. Inland retreat would mean that we would relocate the road, Mattoonik Beach Road. I've placed a map out front which shows the FEMA flood zones, and what you can see is that if that road were to be located, we would still be in flood inundation areas if we were to pull back from its existing location. Another suggestion, early in our process, going back about three years, was a bridge that would be located from Prospect to Washington Street. That option also would require, based on looking at the flood zones, would have the bridge in the flood zone itself, so that it doesn't provide a viable option to us. Plus, Prospect Street's right-of-way is approximately 40 feet in width, with most of the residential structures are on the street line itself, so there would be no way for us to really have two-way traffic. And plus, with the loss of the road in its existing position, a portion of Prospect Road would also be inundated with water. So we didn't see that as an option. The second option of beach replenishment, or the soft solutions that have been tried by many of the property owners over the years, as much sand is being put on that beach is leaving that beach with each storm. And there still is a continued erosion that's occurring there. So neither of the two long-term recommendations that had been provided in the coastal staff report to the council do we believe are, in fact, effective long-term solutions for Mattoonik. Within that report, the staff, and I'll paraphrase, indicated that if the coastal council were to agree that those two options were not viable long-term solutions, that the council could look at a reclassification through the SAM plan of those eight parcels as allowing for a man-made shoreline. What was interesting to us is that while the non-recommendation was presented, it provided an avenue for the town to proceed in terms of saying this is the most viable of the three options that would be available to us in terms of trying to meet long-term needs. The town certainly is dedicated to being able to protect the road. We're also dedicated to assisting the property owners to be able to protect their property holdings and their investments. We look at any improvements of hard surface that are allowed on those eight parcels as a means of protecting the road. It's the first line of defense. So if they are provided with an opportunity to be able to provide plans for coastal ascent, and they'll have to go through the entire process, to be able to deal with Section 300 as to what hard surfaces that would be allowed, we believe that they should be given that opportunity. But again, these are two separate application processes that we are going forward on. I also want to mention that in the presentation of the staff report, in addition to suggesting that an amendment through the SAM plan was a possible option for the coastal council to consider, they also suggested that somewhat of a quid pro quo would be suggested, and that quid pro quo would be that all of the property east of the area that would be reclassified would be designated as a Mattoonik Headland Coastal Natural Area. Obviously, there's no definitions to what that means at this point. It's something that will be subject to further discussion. Our concern is that we would not, we do not at this time understand what is meant by a Mattoonik Headland Coastal Natural Area, because right now, classified as Type 1 water, there is absolutely no improvements that can be made to that property because it isn't Type 1 water. So if there's going to be a new classification established, the town's question to staff at this point will be, what is it that would be in additional protections that you're looking for with this secondary classification of those properties that doesn't exist under the Red Book right now? Because when we looked at the Red Book, it provides, under Type 1 waters, the various uses that can be allowed. We can't find any of those uses. The only uses that are allowed in a Type 1 water for a cliff, bluff, or bank is point discharge runoff and non-structural shoreline protection, which is beach nourishment. So if those are the only two allowable activities within the present classification as a Type 1 water, we're not sure exactly what it is that is intended as a component of providing for reclassification and assignment of a new title description as a natural resource area. So those are the types of things that we're looking at at this point. Again, I think the cooperation that we received with the coastal staff and some open and frank discussions has been helpful to the town, so that we're not going off in several different directions. But I think that there still is a lot of work for us left to be done. One, on the emergency ascent, where we need to get the marine engineer engaged, get the plans completed and submitted, so that we can get the signature from the Executive Director, so we'll have the opportunity to be able to protect that beachfront from any catastrophic events, and protect the property owners that are east of that potential breach point in the road. We also believe that we need to most assuredly get direction from the council to staff in terms of whether or not we can work with them on a reclassification. Again, their report said if it's not recommended, their report said there's two other options for long-term. We're suggesting to the council that your findings should be that those two long-term suggestions of beach replenishment and inland retreat are not viable options based on the circumstances that are presented to us today. One of the other maps that we have provided is, one of the solutions that has been suggested repeatedly is a soft measures use of burritos. And the burritos are really large sandbags that may be 20 to 30 feet in length and five to 10 feet high. The problem with the burritos is demonstrated on the plaque that is in front of you. And what we have found is that they have not been an effective means of providing for erosion control. As you can see, once they're installed after a serious storm, they're in need of very serious repair and upkeep. And we do not see that as a viable option for those businesses in Mattoonik. We believe that the amount of sandbagging that has been done is demonstrative of the fact that that's an ineffective process at this point, based on the coastal conditions that we're faced with. But that would be really an update from the town's perspective on where we've been since the last meeting and where we are now. And again, I think that the real questions that the town still has, and again, we need to address those with staff, is what is meant by that new area definition within the SAM plan. And secondly, I think from a coastal management council perspective, is direction as to whether or not the recommendation for inland retreat and beach renourishment is, in fact, a viable option. And if it isn't, to give them direction to work with the town, to be able to come up with the proper application for the shoreline feature reclassification. I'd be glad to answer any questions on anything that we haven't gone over.
Thank you.
For those that don't know me, my name is Jeff Willis. I'm the Deputy Director at CRMC. Madam Chair, thank you very much for allowing me to give a brief update, although the Town Manager, in his discussion of how our two staffs has worked, has quite embodied enough of what I would like to tell you as well. And I won't go and duplicate what Steve has said, but I'll reiterate some of it. Since the last time we all met in a joint work session, the coastal council directed our staff to work with the town council staff, as well as to come up with a number of directed tasks that looked at the immediate issue of the erosion problem down in Mattoonik, and also the long-term issues associated with that. And as you all know, we've issued a staff report, what we call a staff report. It was dated April 20th, and we're all aware of it, and Steve actually brought out a number of points in it. That was a major effort to accomplish, we were directed with looking at the temporary development of regulations or permit ascent requirements for addressing the erosion through temporary measures, i.e. the wooden bulkhead issue, as well as the long-term issues. And at the meeting, we talked about water type changes. And I'll get into that in a second. So the staff report looked at the immediate issue of issuing and how to issue wooden bulkhead permits on a temporary basis, and that was accomplished. We met with the town staff within two or three days after that initial meeting with the town council, and we worked out some of the issues, some of the avenues that we would need to approach on both levels, and we came up with an ascent template that we could issue for anyone who was in that area of Mattoonik, who identified eight parcels that came in and wanted to put in the temporary bulkheads. We accomplished that by having a permit application and an ascent ready to go. So that was done there. The larger issue was the long-term issue on how to address the erosion in the area, and one of the options that was specifically discussed at that work session was changing the water type from Type 1 to Type 2. And as Mr. Alfred has already explained, the staff report does not recommend that. And there's a number of reasons why it doesn't recommend that, primarily because it opens the door to a number of activities on a Type 1 shoreline throughout the state of Rhode Island that may not be activities that are sound coastal zone management decisions. It may open up the door to activities that actually impact what we're trying to protect and restore or manage in those areas. So during the course of the development of the staff report, we kicked around a number of ideas, and one that felt that even though, again, it's not a preferred option, it's more palatable than changing a water type, and that's changing the shoreline feature definition in this area to a man-made shoreline. The man-made shoreline designation does not open the door to a number of other activities that a Type 2 change would, and it also addresses the immediate issue that we're seeing in Mattoonik, and that's erosion, a directed erosion on a segment of shoreline that is compromising public health and safety issues, i.e. the road and the water main system down there. So in the staff report, even though there are a number of positions from a coastal zone management perspective, a policy perspective, on why it still might not be a good idea to change it to a man-made shoreline, the staff report also allows for a compromise, and it recognizes the balance of use that the Federal Coastal Zone Management Act requires us as a state to embody, that our state legislation requires us to address, and that is the balance and the management of the issue relative to the activities being proposed. So while a man-made shoreline isn't the most preferred option, of the ones that we could discuss and recommend for potential changes to the program, that was probably, for lack of a better phrase, the most palatable one. To address Mr. Alfred's comments on the coastal natural area, that he doesn't believe that it offers additional protection, it does. In Section 210.4 is where we introduce the term coastal natural areas, and those are areas that are designated by the agency, by the council, and its regulations that offer a higher level of protection from what's already allowed through regulations at that area. Type 1 waters are a most restrictive water type designation, but the associated uplands that are adjacent to Type 1 waters can still do any number of activities that if a coastal natural area designation was put on top of it, it would restrict and manage those better. What we're asking of staff in the staff report is not just to look at what happens on the upland, but to look at what happens in the offshore, the nearshore environment. That particular section of the Mattoonik shoreline has natural break to it with the cobble rock bed that's offshore. It's acting as a natural energy dissipator for storms. It slows erosion down, and as you'll notice, the erosion rates on that segment of the shoreline are far less than the erosion rates elsewhere on either the east or the west side of it. So by offering a balance to, potentially, if the council feels that the designation of man-made shoreline is acceptable for the parcels we're looking at, as a balance and a management tool, looking at the area to the east, if we can offer a coastal natural area designation on top of it, we're also looking at additional protection for activities that occur in the upland, as well as the activities that may impact what happens in the nearshore, just offshore in the water. If we have activities that would affect that cobble bar and would affect its functioning as a natural energy dissipator, then that coastal natural area would offer additional protection to make sure that those activities do not impact that. So that's why we are offering the additional balance of it. It's a management decision. It's a management, we're a management agency. We look at ways to manage the shoreline. We look at ways to protect the shoreline. We look at ways to restore the shoreline. In this particular section of the shore in Rhode Island, we felt that erosion is a very difficult issue to address. We've come up with a number of solutions that are not good coastal zone management solutions, but we offer compromises. We offer balances. We offer ways to look at those issues. We offer ways to look at those issues to the best of our ability to balance the uses that are expected to occur down there. And in return, and the coastal natural area is one area where maybe we're looking at a balance in return for that. To that point, I don't want to reiterate what the town manager said about our staffs working together, other than that they are. They're working well together, as you would expect. We've worked well over the years. We continue to work well, and we will obviously continue to work in the future to address these issues. The solutions that are being forwarded are issues, our solutions that our staff is working with your staff on, to come up with ways to pre-position everybody, the local level, at the state level, to address, in one particular case, catastrophic events. If those structures are lost to a storm, we'll have in place a solution to protect the road. The other is a longer-term, absent a catastrophic event, and that's the hardening of the shoreline potentially, should other alternatives not be found to be palatable. So that's, we've done a lot over that time. We haven't received any applications for the temporary wooden bulkheads to date. We've received two, what we call preliminary determination applications from the two business owners in Mattoonik. And what the preliminary determination application is, is a request to the agency to evaluate a potential activity relative to the agency's rules. It is not a permit application at all. It is simply a request to say, if I propose this, what are your rules and what obstacles am I up against, or what avenues do I have to pursue to eventually get a permit? We have those two preliminary determinate applications in-house. We have not received any applications for temporary wooden bulkheads to date. And here, and our next phase is really to take the staff report and discuss it with you all on a policy level, because any decision that we make from this point forward, in my opinion, opens up the door to any number of policy discussions. If we go in one direction, we'll have a host of questions to ask and answer. If we go in a different direction, we'll have totally different questions that are opened up and we'll need to answer. So clearly, this is the beginning of that long-term discussion on a policy level. And be happy to answer any questions. You have brought a number of our staff here. If you have technical questions, we have a geologist or engineer, policy analyst. So please feel free, ask any questions you wish. But thank you very much.
I'm sorry, can we use the microphone? I'm sorry. Thanks. Otherwise, it doesn't get picked up on the tape. Thank you.
I understand through your discussion that you're considering adding cobble to the nearshore or offshore area as kind of an underwater armoring. Is that what we're talking about?
No, maybe I need to make myself clear. That coastal natural area contains not only the shoreline, but would also look to protect the water area adjacent to the shoreline, out to a certain depth or out to a certain linear feet, because there is a cobble bank there right now, natural, yeah, natural, right, that acts to help slow down the wave energy. And actually, you'll notice that segment of the shoreline in the area that we propose has lower erosion rates than other areas in the immediate area. So no, we would look to, if we can have that area be designated as a coastal natural area, it would allow for the council to look at activities being proposed nearby that may impact its function. And if those activities would impact its function, then having that coastal natural area designation will help us in our decision-making process on whether or not that's an acceptable activity or not.
We are not, we are not thinking about adding similar features along the coastline, adding cobble.
We have not in the staff report. There are other solutions to looking at sand deposition on the shore. One of the things that we are aware of is that there is a depth of water, and I think this was discussed at the last joint session that we had, there's a depth of water beyond which, in other words, in deeper waters, there's sediment, there's sand that's suitable for placement on the beach, that will never find its way back into the system through natural processes. Inside that depth, there is the sand that comes and goes over time, gets moved laterally into our offshore, that we don't want to disturb. We want to make sure it stays in the system. But if we can figure out a way to extract the sediment that's beyond that closure depth in deeper waters and introduce it into the system, we're adding a natural way, we're adding to the natural processes to enhance the beach. As we discussed at the last meeting, that's a money issue. That's very expensive. But science, we know they're out there. We need to find out exactly where those depths are and where those sediment sources are. It's a solution. It's a long-term solution. But again, it opens up a bunch of questions that you need answers to.
Which is, that would really be a replenishment process?
Sure, sure. It's done in other areas of the country as well.
Jim?
Jeff, just to follow up on that question, then, re-nourishment, many of the fishermen tell you there's plenty of sand out there. So what you're saying with the current action of currents and whatnot, we cannot recapture that sand unless it be by artificial means. Is that what you're telling me?
Partially. There's a source of sediment that's, I'll call it nearshore, that's within a certain depth of water, that is coming onshore and offshore over the course of the year. There's beyond that, in deeper water and further out, there's sources of sediment that'll never find its way into the system because the energy's not there to get it to the system. So if we can artificially get it into the system, that would help enhance long-term replenishment.
But is that huge compressors, slurry systems?
It would be essentially a large dredging project, if you want to think of it that way, from moving one sand from one area to another.
And my second question was, early on, you made a comment, can you just tell me what your fears are? You mentioned the reclassification type 1 to type 2. Can you give me an example of what your fears are? You kind of said it would open a Pandora's box, but could you give us some examples of where it may have happened already in the state of Rhode Island, or what the fears are of you and your staff?
I can't recall an area of the shoreline where it's went from type 1 to type 2. I can tell you a number that have gone the other way. Type 2 shorelines are generally associated with low-energy environments and residential upland uses. Type 1 waters are associated with high-energy environments and conservation-type areas, not as much development, but there are residential areas associated with type 1 waters too. They are, type 1 waters are looked to be more protective. Type 2 waters are your typical residential shoreline, but again, in a low-energy environment. With the Atlantic Ocean fronting this section, having a type 2 water, having a 1 to 2 change would allow one particular activity, a residential dock, to be built. And a residential dock in this area would basically be a massive pier-type structure that really wouldn't fit with the character of the area, nor with the size of the property that it's associated with.
Yeah, I guess I understand that language, but you're looking at a community here, and I'm not sure if I have the right numbers. Steve can help me out. But we have about 290 seasonal properties at the Carpenter's Beach Meadows, and I think we have well over 200.
240.
240 homes. So I guess I have a difficult time with your definition.
It's okay, yeah.
But why type 2 isn't?
It's mostly, I'm sorry, it's mostly the high-energy offshore environment that's the Atlantic Ocean that categorizes as type 1 waters.
So, yeah, all right, we need a language change on that. All right, thank you. I've got other questions that can come later.
Any further questions here at our table? Could you just give us a brief history of how that waterfront got classified as the specific type?
Sure. I, okay. When the program was developed in the 1970s with the federal government, one of the issues that has to be done for any coastal program development is looking at its shoreline, looking at its uses that occur there, looking at the natural resources as well as the physical resources. And the 1978 program did not have what are called water types like we know them today. They had water areas that they called conservation areas, protection areas. They had water types for high-intensity boating like marinas. They didn't just, they didn't categorize them 1, 2, 3, or 4. And then in 1983, we went to an actual numbers-based water type system. And at that time, the lines were drawn in terms of where one water type began and another ended in 1983, and those were done through rulemaking. I don't know exactly the rationale for any of that, but that was all part and parcel of the development of the program from the 70s through the 1983 iteration of the program that actually labeled segments of the shoreline 1, 2 through type 6.
Carol?
No, we go back and forth. That's great dialogue.
Can you just go back and forth? That's great dialogue. Can you just go back and forth? That's great dialogue. You mentioned the cobble just offshore is an area that's, well, for a natural area. Are you, I, my question is, when we protect the shoreline in man-made structures, what happens to the depth there and sand and then that are being constructed to that east in general? And in this case, are you saying that the cobble offshore would help protect the area that's east opposed to the structure? So it wouldn't be such an erosion after you harden the shoreline after the wet?
Sure, sure. And if I need to, I have Janet Friedman, our coastal geologist here, and she may be able to go into more detail. If we harden the shoreline in front of the properties that we're looking at, that will lock up the sediment that is used to nourish beaches down the system. Generally, the sediment transport on the southern shore of Rhode Island is from west to east, so the sediment's coming from Watch Hill all the way, making its way down into Point Jureth. And headlands, which is what the Mattoonik is, which is the area in between the barriers and the coastal lagoons, is the sediment source for the beaches in the system. So eventually, the sediment that's coming downshore gets collected as it goes along. It comes up on the beach. It comes off the beach. Through erosion, through storm events, it removes some of that sediment from a headland like Mattoonik and brings it down and deposits it on a beach further to the east. We have the state beach at East Mattoonik, for example, that is probably benefiting by this sediment transport and some of the sediment from Mattoonik. If we change the designation and we put in a rip rapping there, you would be locking up the sediment from that headland that helps supply beaches down in the system. It's not the only source of sediment, but it's a significant part of it. The cobble breakwater, break area that you're talking about is really protecting that area of the shoreline immediately in front of it. Would it be impacted by the sediment transport? I don't know. I'd have to ask Janet specifically to answer that question, but it's there and it's serving a purpose right now with or without the rip rapping.
Carol? This cobble, what do you call it, a cobble bank? Is that what you called it out there, a cobble?
Cobble bed. Janet, Janet, is there a better term for it?
Where is that exactly located? Is it right in front of Mattoonik Beach, or is it closer to east Mattoonik?
It's to the east of the area that we're talking about here. And I actually have, it's in our staff, do you have our staff report?
I don't have it, no.
Okay. It would be on page 11 of our staff report. We actually identify the area and we draw, we draw a line around it.
So.
Jeff, you can use the maps up front. That one there would show the area. In fact, you can see the breakwater there.
We're looking at this, the, the, the substrate in the cobble bed that's there, the elevation here sits under the erosion, or as the waves come in, they actually get knocked down here first. And so therefore, the erosion is a little bit of a risk.
But that cobble bed isn't necessarily protecting the 675 feet of properties that we're discussing tonight?
No.
And just to clarify, it sounds like what we're here tonight to discuss is changing the designation of the 675-foot area along Mattoonik headland from headlands, bluffs, and cliffs to man-made shorelines. Is that, like, we're down to just that issue at this point?
It's one of the options that we discussed as a staff. Of the options that we've been discussing, while, and none of this is going to be perfect, it's better than, in our opinion, than changing the water type.
Okay, so the other options are pretty much off the table at this point. Just stick with that one and the pros and cons to that.
As a staff, we would recommend that they be off the table, sure.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Kathy Fogarty.
So I just want to go back and just, just ask a question.
Is the mic on?
Yes, it's on. So if you, what you talked about was going from a, that there's no, let me just read my notes here, from where there's the no natural cobble bar that's slowing the erosion to long-term solutions if added replenishing issue. So this is a policy issue that coastal will, can decide on at this point?
Yes.
Okay. So if you're saying it's moving from, from the Watch Hill area over the sand, except for that couple of little spots there that we have the waves crashing off to, it's helping down at east Mattoonik. And if you follow the natural progression of the beach, what we're running into is the jetty coming out of Galilee, where really more of the sand is piling up and really landing in that corner.
And it's actually a source that could be used.
That could be used.
Right.
Okay, because I remember we discussed this before.
Yes, right.
And Grover mentioned that this is used in other parts of the country, and then they referred to the, I remember him saying that this is used elsewhere, but it really depends on the amount of people who live in the area, like high-rise areas along the beachfronts of Myrtle Beach or those types of, you know, areas down south. Well, I think 240 homes, never mind what we have over at the seasonal home, you know, which is over 200, that qualifies really as 500 homes, and it's a village. It is certainly a village, and I hope it's something that coastal members can take into account, that we have a, really, a stockpile that's gathering up in that corner that, you know, if we have to keep moving it back and forth, we have it there versus risking the safety of the road, access to the road where we know, as Mr. Alfred has gone over in detail, we don't have an option of pushing, you know, to this miracle bridge that people keep referring to. It's not going to happen. It's out of the picture. It's out of the question. So we have to use what we have here. So I just hope that with the new board, that they take that into consideration, because it is, it is a village that we don't want to lose, and it is a source of, as I said at the last meeting with the coastal, it is a source of economic development, and that's one of the few things we have left here in the state of Rhode Island before that technology and knowledge-based area comes into play. We need that money from, from the tourists that come down, and Mattoonik is really a stronghold of, and I want to keep that village in its place, and I hope this is a consideration that maybe we can take into, into account after we get, we have to protect what we have here now, and with the 675 feet, but maybe protect some of the other, the land there. And I know I'll get the geologist with, you know, the technical issues, but I mean.
No, I think, if I can interrupt, I'm sorry, I think she was probably just going to say that that sediment source is sitting there. We know it's sitting there. It can be used today. It's just a matter of getting it out and getting it to the right spot.
The first meeting we had here in this chamber, not the one up in Providence, that that was kind of like, that's only really when you have high-rise and high volume of people living by the water. And I consider that, I consider our area high-volume.
I think that was, that was probably more of a formulaic type of response in terms of, if you have the Army Corps, if you have the federal government doing those types of beach nourishment.
No, it's expensive, I understand.
They have, they have a formula that they have to match the commercial benefit to the work, the amount of money that they're going to expend. Other counties down south, on their county level, they actually dedicate monies for those types of funds to do that type of work directly. So, yeah, no, I agree with you. I mean, there is, there is, there are a number of solutions. One of them is taking sediment and introducing it to the system, actually placing it on the beach, and we know where a couple of those sources of sediment are. And it really comes down to the mechanics. It's not, it's not not permissible. It's actually fairly, fairly easy to permit those types of activities. It's getting the money to do the work.
I've got to think of down south, that they've got some economies that, you know, have made this, I know it's still going to be expensive, but as they do it more and they perfect it more, you know, the costs hopefully will go down, and maybe we could learn something from somewhere down there. I know it's expensive, but it's just.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a wonderful solution. We would wholly endorse that solution.
We have to, we have to work on the 675.
Okay, you got it.
Did Janet want to respond to the microphone, Jim?
Yeah.
Janet.
If you could just go to the mic, Janet. Thanks.
Just to address the beach replenishment, we've had several proposals with the town over the years, and one of the issues is that it's very hard to get the sediment from the source to Mattoonik because you can only hydraulically dredge so far. And, you know, even with the South Coast Project in Ninnagrit, we did work with the town to have them bring the sand there, but then the town decided that it would be too difficult to be able to truck it in enough time before the DEM parking lot had to be cleared. cleared for, when their season opened. I mean, again, now this is a ongoing maintenance project and the town, it, it costs money to truck and to dredge the sand. And there is a sand source there that we need to do maintenance. The town of Charleston has been working on collecting money, dedicating money for that town to do the dredging. And it would be a, a source that if the town of South Kingston wanted to go in on it, there would be sand. It's just a matter of where's the money come from.
Question that comes up at every meeting we have on every topic that we...
Yeah. And there are several communities in the south that they actually dedicate funds for their own beach nourishment.
And could you, Janet, could you just give, do you mind, Jim? I just have a, could you just give an approximation of what we're talking dollar-wise with that?
Well, it's probably about, I don't know what the trucking costs are. Dredging right now is maybe 10 to 15, $12 to $15 a yard dredging. Is that correct, Janet? Around that ballpark? And, but then there'd be trucking on top of that. And if you get about 20 cubic yards in a truckload, you're looking at many, many truckloads coming. But there, there is enough sand to build the beach out about 100 feet in front of the ocean mist as well as the town beach.
We can't put a ballpark figure on the, on the trucking? We can't put a ballpark figure on that?
Well, it depends on how much gasoline is and, and where you would get the, I don't know whether you would rent trucks or you would hire contractor. I mean, there's a lot of different, and maybe Ray can address that.
Ray?
An old barge floating out there.
The largest dredging project we did, Ella, where we actually trucked in sand was in, and you've got to factor in inflation. That was in 1995. We brought in 5,000 cubic yards to the town beach, and that was $70,000. And that was 16 years ago. As Janet said, it's, it's very labor-intensive. Clearly, the, the town has a few, you know, 10-wheel trucks that might make it, but we always have to end up jobbing it out to the larger firms like Sherman or, or South County Sand and Gravel and many, many truckloads. I mean, we trucked it in for, for, for many, many days. And I think that, that whatever that comes out to, 5,000 cubic yards for 70 grand is much more, again, you've got to account for the inflation. So it, I wouldn't be surprised if it was a factor of 100% if you could double that number if we had to hire someone to bring the sand in.
And that would be for the Point Judith, too. There, it's too far to hydraulically dredge it to the area, so it would be a matter of trucking there. And the last time the Point Judith Channel was dredged, we actually did look at, we put offshore bars that, you know, John Boothroyd mapped the shoreline so that we could tell what area would be the best to put them so that those bars would weld onto the shoreline. But that's spread across the whole shoreline, so you do get some benefits and there's more sediment in the system. But again, the sediment moves.
Jim, do you mind if I just follow up with one more question? And I know this is a difficult question, Janet. Is there sustainability for, you know, the lifespan of that? And I know that's a difficult question, but...
Oh, for the beach replenishment? It, it's storm-driven. So it depends on, you know, what, what happens in that time.
I'm going to go to Jim and then Carol.
Janet, how far is this wonderful mine of sand offshore from the area that we're talking about?
Um, yeah, I don't know. I'm not sure. We haven't mapped out that far. And we're not, we're not really sure if we have deep deposits. You know, we know that where there's sand, but we don't know whether it's a veneer and it would be prohibitively expensive to even bother, it wouldn't be worthwhile to dredge. We don't know enough about the offshore sediment.
You know the distance that the Army Corps used in the Charleston breachway to bring sand out to the beach?
Yeah, it was...
The slurry method and the...
Yes. Yeah. It was 3,000, 4,000 feet, something like that.
So, all right, short of a mile, but...
Yeah, yeah. You can, you could pump a couple of miles, but once you get it with one booster pump, but after you get beyond that, it's, there's too many things to break down. You don't have the power, really.
And I certainly understand that, but that's why the question was, how far offshore is the sand? If we were within a mile, maybe there's some way to slurry that onto shore. So you're really kind of not, anyway, let's, I'll go to my second question. Is it the Harbor Refuge? What is presenting the sand coming this way, landing on our shores? What is preventing this from happening?
The sand coming...
You said, Jeff said earlier that the sand just can't, the out, the sand far offshore, not the in-sand, just doesn't make it to our shoreline. What is the problem there with the lateral movement of currents?
Oh, the, the sand along the shore is, is in the system. And it does make it to, it makes it to the shoreline at times and it erodes.
Jeff was only saying small amounts, not the large part of sand that's further offshore. I'm just trying to get distances here.
Well, you know, I mean, you have, you have, the shoreline's eroding and you have sea level rise. So as that sea level rises, you have more opportunity to erode more of the shoreline.
All right. Well, forgetting currents then, what does the offshore breeze then? How deep can the effect and the wave action bring sand to shore in our...
About 40 feet.
About 40 feet in depth?
Yeah, yeah.
With the wave action?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I guess I don't know why we can't slurry in some sand. I guess I'm just going to have one thought here. I really think somehow or another, I appreciate the short-term work that all our staffs have done here, and I'm sure the folks down here, these eight parcels, appreciate that, too. Somehow or another, we need to work out something with you that we can use the potential manmade protection area in front of these homes and buildings currently and not be put off as a long-distance plan. I would like to think there are other options out there. You can certainly see them online, but we're never given any options for potential to build up our shoreline. I certainly can see plenty of these online. I won't give you all the names. Others can address them. But I think we ought to be given an opportunity here to maybe hold some of that land, sand in shore. But have you worked with other options in other states? Is there something that might work here? And especially if we have common ground here for these eight places where we can have kind of a linear move from the two shoreline structures there? Why can't we experiment here? Why can't we work with the Army Corps and coastal to beyond the wooden bulkhead, just go out in front of these businesses and give us the opportunity to try to catch and capture sand in front of these businesses?
Are you speaking like Groynes or something? I mean, we haven't seen any proposals.
HESCO system online, there was this, oh God, what's his name? Holberg Systems, filling tubes with tanks and creating kind of road bumps in there. I mean, I just see these things online, but for some reason, we're never shown opportunities to, let's discuss this. Let's see what the potential is. Because, could this be an experimental area?
You would have to propose something. Now, the, the, what's the guy's name? Holberg?
It was a Holberg...
Holberg. He, that, that's essentially Groynes. Now, that could be applied for, as the town could apply as a special exception. They would have to, it would have to be reviewed. I don't know. You know, I mean, I don't think, I'm sorry.
I certainly think we'd like to work with you, Jeff and Janet, on this. I think we'd like to work with you on this, but just giving us a short-term solution now and the cost of these things. Now, I only looked at a couple of these things. The costs of these are most reasonable. I mean, you're talking millions of dollars to bring the slurry sand in from offshore. Is there some way that we could do the temporary wooden bulkhead and experimental this with the linear line, working with your staff? Is there something you can do with us, work with us, help us? Give us options. We'd just love to have options from you.
Sure, sure. And we can present this to the council. There are a number of experimental applications out there that are being tried, and we've actually allowed them over the years. A number of them have failed. And the one I'm thinking of in particular, it looks like discs, large cement discs that are placed 90 degrees to each other that tries to capture sediment as it comes into the shore. But sure, I mean, I mean, if, if there's applicants willing to, to go that route and there's some experimental way to maybe capture, we could definitely sit down as a staff, try to figure something out, work with the council, try to get a better understanding of what these systems are trying to do relative to the intent and the objectives of our program. I, I don't see why we can't bring those types of ideas to your attention and, and talk about them, absolutely discuss them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Carol?
You know, we're talking about the sand and bringing it onto the beach. How much sand are we talking about? You said to make it 100, to expand the beach by 100 feet in front of these eight properties and also the town beach? I mean, how much sand are we talking about?
30,000.
30,000 cubic yards. So that would be six times what we did back in the 90s. Okay. So that seems rather unrealistic at this point. I mean, so we're back to the discussion of changing it from Headlands, Bluffs and Cliffs to manmade shorelines. I mean, we, we need to have that discussion.
And, and I think that's one of the things we're attempting to, to, night and, but there's a lot of discussion on beaches and protecting beaches and widening beaches, and that's ideal. One thing to keep in mind, that is, if this shoreline goes from what it is now to a riprap shoreline, there won't be a beach. At low tide and at high tide, there'll be water up against the riprap. So that, it's, it's a fundamental change from what, what's there now to what may be there or what will be there once a riprappervetment goes in. And then, of course, the policy issues that are associated with that, public access and trying to build that public access in to that type of activity, all needs to be discussed and incorporated into that. But I mean, if, if, if the objective is sandy beaches, riprappervetment's not the way to go. So...
One, no one else? Jeff, one last question. That riprap, is that natural? Was that our last connection with Black Island after the last glacial retreat? Where'd the riprap come from? Or is that just simply a natural, maybe moraine or whatever the glacial may have dumped, the land bridge?
You mean the, the cobble bar that's there?
Yeah, yeah.
I would think that that was part of the glacial retreat and left, left from that. I'm not positive.
Maybe Mr. Boothroyd or Mr. Friedman.
Question, I want to ask you. I'll ask you, Mr. Boothroyd, what's the solution to this problem? That's not the question. He's... [laughing].
I'm a coastal glacial geologist. I'm retired from the University of Rhode Island. I'm also the state geologist. I've been here doing coastal things and glacial things for 36 years. As I first got quoted on, I think in 1984, I said, "There are no permanent solutions. There are only temporary fixes." And so one of the temporary fixes here is to build a rubble mound seawall. And with all the conversation that's been going on about there will be no beach. The other thing is with, with beach replenishment, people use the term nourishment. I haven't used the term replenishment. It works, but you have to continuously put sand on the beach. That's no permanent solution either, but it is a temporary fix. But I, I'm here to tell you, it's a lot cheaper to put sand on the beach than it is to put, to build a rubble mound seawall and maintain it forever. Because what's going to happen if you put that rubble mound seawall in there is you're going to be chasing wing walls because it's going to start to fail around the edges and you're just going to build it along the shoreline. And it's going to go beyond that 675 feet. So it's, it's basically the town's choice on what they want to do. But if you're, if you're walking at, at spending money for 10,000 yards of sand, that's peanuts compared to the building a rubble mound seawall. That's big bucks. I'm sure that the, that the town manager will tell you what those big bucks are. Maybe not. [laughing]. No. So anyway, let me answer Mr. O'Neill's question. That, we call that a cobble, that cobble pavement out there is, another word for it is erosional terrace. And basically, that, those large class stones, if you will, are made from the erosion of the bluff as the bluff eroded across the, across the shoreface as sea level rose. So if you go to the bluff today where the, where the houses are, that's, the sand goes in, the sand goes along the shoreline and the large class just go downward and they stay there. And that's what, that's what that is. There's nothing magic about that. And so while I'm on a roll here, the sand goes offshore doing storms in something that's called downwelling. There's a really good literature, literature on this. And it gets down there out beyond its, its return depth. Corps of Engineers calls it closure depth, but we prefer to call it return depth. But what Janet Friedman said was it was about 40 feet. We think it's 12 meters. That's 40 feet. For this shoreline, it's different for all shorelines, depends on the, depends on the wave energy. There's some information, when they were going to build a nuke at Charleston, they had a tripod out there where the exhaust water was going to be. And it was out there at, I forget how many meters depth. And the Blizzard 78 came along. And they measured a one-meter-per-second current offshore before they lost the instrument, flipped over the, flipped over the tripod. But anyway, that was carrying the sand offshore. We can see those in our side scan sonar. We can see the swaths where the sand goes, travels down. Once it gets out there, it can't come back. But then, there is another small sheet, which has been well-described here, that travels along it, that's, that's adjacent to the shoreline and extends out a few hundred yards and into a few meters of water depth. And that exchanges with the shoreline. And in between is a big whopping cobble pavement, which reflects the, the glacial geology. So out there, where the sand ends up, where the dragers work, you have no idea how thick that sand is. And Janet Friedman mentioned that it might be just a veneer. And a veneer means this thick. You'd have to dredge a lot of sand to get, a lot of area to get something. And of course, you're out there in somebody else's work area, too. So that's, that's always a consideration. So yes, you, this is not Ocean City, Maryland. In Ocean City, Maryland, there are gigantic bars out there, which are tens of feet thick, which with their hotel tax, they dredged three or four times, put the sand on the shore, and the sand goes rapidly to the south. And every year, they go down there, they pick it up and they carry it back up the shoreline. They, they put heavy construction equipment on the beach in the spring and put it back. But that's a, that's a very large operation. But it pays for itself because it's all those high-rises back there. I guess that's all I want to say.
Could you give him the microphone, please? Thanks. Thanks, Paul.
John, this is the third meeting that, that I've attended, and I know many of the people in this audience have been around for years and years chasing this question. If I were the guy that was going to solve the problem, I would, and I hired you, and I said to you, "Give me a one-year solution to make their property safe. Give me a five-year solution to make their property safe." And the third part of the question is, "What is the impact on surrounding areas by doing those things?" What would you tell me? Remember, I'm paying you to do this.
One-year solution is burritos.
He said that they don't work. They break.
He said they didn't work. I didn't say they didn't work. A burrito, let me give you an analogy. If you had, if you had a large object that was as big as this area in here and it was solid, and somebody gave you a shovel and said, "Move that." Or you had a bunch of sand in little boxes and they gave you a shovel and they said, "Move that," which would be movable. It's the same mass, but it's all how you... It's the same mass, but it's all how you package it and put it together. And so, when people say, "Well, we tried sandbags." Sandbags are about yay big. A burrito is longer than this room here, and a couple meters, a couple meters high. And so, yes, they are filled with sand, and yes, they will be damaged in a storm, but you just need to go to Browning's Beach and see that they were damaged, but they survived the, I mean, the Patriot's Day storm in 2007. They require constant maintenance. That's your one year. What's the next one? Five years?
Yeah, all right.
Five years is...
Let me work on the questions. I want to, I want to stop some of the going around the merry-go-round. If I'm that property owner, and you've got me set with a burrito for a year.
Okay.
I've got to, somebody's got to perform maintenance on that burrito to make sure that the succeeding years, it's not going to burst open or...
If there is a storm.
If there is a storm.
A major storm. And so, I'm saying that the Patriot's Day storm's 2007. So it's now 2011.
Okay. So, all right.
So if you have a major storm, yes, it'll be damaged. If you have a hurricane, it's history. But then, you don't have to worry.
Assuming none of those...
Your least problem is the burrito.
Assuming none of those, your answer is that for the next four or five years, I've got a grace period in which I'm looking for a long-term solution. Is that correct?
You want a long, longer than five years.
Oh, add infinitum. Go to eternity.
Move the road. Bite the bullet and move the road.
That's, that may be the practical, you know, your answer from a geological, from a real practical standpoint of all the people sitting here saying, "We've got a road, we've got houses. How do we solve that for five years? Is it still burritos? Or is it, or is it something additional that will give them the solace that they're not going to be washed away?"
If you build a rubble mound seawall, it will, it will probably last five years, and you will have to maintain it, because the first thing that's going to happen is it's going to try to go around the ends. And that's what you mean by chasing wing walls. And there's a good example of that, right, at the town beach. Because there's that revetment, which is different. Revetments are that same material placed on a slope. And so, whatever erodes behind it, it falls down. And so, what happened is, he's chasing his wing wall, and there was a project that was just done. I advised with Ray on that project. That was just a few years ago, adjacent to the town beach. Because it was eroding back, and they needed some protection in that area, so they, that's what they did. So this is what, this is traditionally what happens if you go to, if you go to the, probably one of the mightiest seawalls in North America, and that's the Galveston Seawall, go to the end of the Galveston Seawall, which is 13 miles down Galveston Island. What does it look like? It's eroding around the end.
So that's the answer to the third part of the question. What impact is it going to have on other areas nearby?
It will certainly take away the source of sand, which is on the, on the headland, but that is really hard to predict, because the sand's still going to bypass that feature and run down to the, to the next place. So what you have simply now is you do have, you have the town beach, which is, which is eroding, but sand's coming and, sand's coming towards you for the town beach. But I'm trying to remember what it looks like. Ah, I do know what it looks like. Once you get to the end of the bluff erosion area, that's where the water line goes that almost went away in 2007. So that's your end point, that's an end point right there. So that's your next problem, basically, and you need to do, you need to do something for that.
John, if, let's assume for the moment that the burrito is the solution, the short-term solution that everybody agrees...
Fix, temporary fix.
Temporary fix, okay. Two parts. How much sand would it, would we need to fill those burritos?
I can't do that calculation in my head. But here's, here's a, for instance, call up the town of Narragansett. They put 10,000 yards of sand on their beach every year, and Sherman does it. They just did it. Then you'll get a, you'll get a this year's number, trucked and spread out on the beach.
Where are they getting it from?
From Sherman, is my understanding. It doesn't much matter, it's an upland source, where you get it from. But they, they get it down, they dump it, and I don't know whose bucket loader it is, whether it's the town's bucket loader or Sherman's bucket loader, but it's spread out on the beach in a, in an approved template.
I didn't, I didn't run a seaside community, so I'm not familiar with burritos, but if, if it appeared that this is the temporary solution, could it be done this year, assuming, not forgetting about our regulations, assuming...
I think what Grover Pughgate said at the last meeting was, it could be done, it could have been done now. Could already have been done.
Yep. What's, what's our feeling? I know we're not favoring these burritos, but would you give us a little more? Thanks, John.
Actually, the burritos are permissible as well. If you're talking about trucking in sand, that could be done anytime. We do it every year. There is a number of beaches, I'm thinking of one in particular down near Wakeup Hogue, where they bring in, it's private, they bring in their own source of sediment, it's just a seasonal, temporary thing. As Dr. Boothroyd just mentioned, the town of Narragansett does it every year as well. Bringing in sand is not an issue, it's not inconsistent with the coastal program. We understand the temporary nature of it. The processes will bring it offshore and bring it inshore. And that sand, some of it staying in the system, probably some of it's going off past that, what I know is the closure depth. But that's very easily permissible.
Well, today's May 31st, is it? Yeah, tomorrow's June 1st. I can remember talking to Grover, or Grover and you, a couple of years ago about this problem, when we were concerned then about the road being inundated. And here we are, a couple of years later, and we're still talking. If this council deemed, and Steve Alfred and the, and the owners of the property deemed that was the way to go, do you think it's something that could be done rather rapidly?
Very.
Ian?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Tony O'Neal, a new member of this council, but I want to refer back to my nomination here to Senator Chair of those hearings, where I pledge to use the science of coastal management as the basis for my decision-making as a coastal member. What I've heard here tonight, suggesting a couple of scientific conclusions, and I'm going to follow up on the vice chair's comments about the burritos. Some of those conclusions is that the reclassification of this stretch of sandy beach as a manmade feature is something of a willful self, self-perceived. It's not a manmade feature, it's a sandy beach. So if we're going to reclassify sandy beach as being legally and physically comparable to the Hills Point waterfront or the Placid Point here, then at least let's do that with our eyes wide open. We would be bosomless in reclassifying sandy beach as a manmade structure, which it is not. If the council chooses to do that, that sounds inappropriate, that seems to be without the purpose, but it doesn't seem to be based on the science. The other thing the science tells us is that the beach would be destroyed. The parting of this area of beach with the permanence of a revetment or rubble mound would essentially destroy that beach which stretches between the existing shoreline structure to the east and the existing shoreline structure to the west. My understanding, and perhaps my, my, my nuance on this council is the reason for this, but my understanding is that sandy beaches where they exist are strictly protected, not only by the coastal program, but by state and federal law. So in order for us to authorize the deliberate destruction of sandy beach where we know one exists, also perhaps would fall for a certain degree of self-perceived and self-illusion. I am willing to be convinced, and I'm willing to listen to the science, but the science I've heard so far this evening, and in the voluminous reports I've read, tell me that reclassifying the beach as a manmade structure is simply falsehood and building a manmade structure where there is no sandy beach. This can amount to a death sentence to that sandy beach, which is protected in law, the coastal program, as well as the Constitution, which leads me back to the vice chair's observation, that in the short run and in the near term, these burritos may in fact be the only solution, which meets the needs of the property owners, of the coastal resources, a management program, state and federal laws, among the United States Constitution. So I'm open to being convinced otherwise by any of the experts and policymakers in the room, but at this point, it's a tough sell for me, the parting of the beach is not a violation of the goals of this program, as well as existing law.
Councilwoman Polly Eddy?
Could I ask you about the burritos? Because my understanding is that if you continue west down that beach, aren't there a group of five or six houses down there? And they used burritos on those houses to try and save them? And I, they, it's not been very successful, has it? They've had to move some of the houses back? Or has it been successful?
It's, it's been pretty successful. It depends on what you define as success. The houses are still there that had the burritos in front of them. The house that was moved, was moved, because...
Before the burritos?
They moved it because they wanted to save the house, and they had some other land that they could move it to. And that was moved prior to putting in the burritos. The, the houses that are there, I mean, unfortunately, the shoreline keeps migrating landward, and they're creating kind of an island for themselves. And you can see that even with the burritos and structure, that you're still getting the erosion around the edges. But it has preserved the houses. And they have to, I think the people are aware that it's a constant maintenance issue. I mean, they're not happy with it, but without the burritos there, the houses would have been damaged in storms.
I'm trying to think, Janet, when were those put in? Were they put in maybe five years ago?
2007, they had started the structure prior to the Patriot's Day storm, and then they finished it after the Patriot's Day storm. And they've, they've done maintenance on it. Yeah, they have done maintenance on it through time, though, and added to it.
But, but it has, as you say, been successful in keeping the houses there?
It has been successful that the houses are still there now, and without them, they would have sustained a lot more damage over the years since they put it in.
I'm sorry, Janet, I do have pictures that you sent me, I believe, from 2007 with the burritos, and then pictures of houses that have been damaged in 2010. And it does look like, you know, there is significant damage here to the burritos and damages to the houses. And was there not one house that was completely lost?
That was the house that was moved. Oh, no, that's true. There was, Senator Chafee's house had been demoed.
In 2007?
No, no, it was prior to that, and I think maybe 2003 or '04.
There are pictures here where there was a house in 2007 that was moved.
No, that was moved. And that was specifically because the owner of the house wanted to move it to preserve the house. And that's ultimately the best way to preserve these coastal properties, is to get them out of harm's way.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carol Hagan-Mackenzie?
I just wanted to respond, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Tony.
Tony, nice to meet you. Anyway, we've, yeah, we've had several meetings, and I want to go back to the frustration that we feel here in South Kingstown. One of the main issues is the public safety, dealing with a breach of the road. Now, what we've been talking about around and around all these meetings is that the, we cannot protect the properties in front of the road, but when the properties go into the drink and the road is, you know, in immediate danger, then we can put up a wall. I mean, so this is how frustrated I believe the people in this room, and myself, and we're going all over this all over again. Obviously, you're all new members, and you need to, you know, get up to snuff on all of this. But I mean, we've been here already, and this is the main problem. Those eight properties, that's 675 feet. If you go down there, there's very little beach there. I mean, the beach is just washing away as you, as you see it, as you stand there. And the minute that road breaches and those properties are gone, again, I'm going to say it, then we can put up a wall. You know, we're saying that's too late. Why can't we put up the wall now? The property owners are willing to assist. They want to do it to protect their properties. We need to protect the road. I mean, we've gone over this so many times. So it is very frustrating. It seems ridiculous to me that we let these properties go, and then we put up the wall to protect the road. Now, I can't make it any simpler. If you, you know, Mr. Boothroyd had very good points, but he did say, the sand isn't going, that's 675 feet there, the sand is bypassing that anyway. You can see it. It's just not coming in there, it's heading off. So, I mean, that's where we are, and we need to get to that point, because that is ridiculous to say that we can put up a wall the minute the properties are gone.
Councilman Jim O'Neill?
Yeah, to go back with what Carol said, Tony, and I'd rather have the owners of these eight properties who, some are here tonight. You've got to have a very advantageous tide, low tide, what you would consider beach. There's no beach. Most of the time for the beach is under the buildings. So science, put that aside for a few minutes. You know, you've got some photos, if the tides are right, low tide, yes, you've got a place for a few blankets there. But basically, the average tide is coming up under half of these buildings, and the rest are private. And as Carol just said, we've got to address this. If you were a general in the Army, you would have lost that war, because if we lose this first line of defense, then we lose the road. And Mr. Boothroyd said, "Oh, maybe we've got to bite the bullet." Boy, I don't know who's going to pay for that expense, but if the government's going to pay for that expense, maybe they ought to pay for the sand to get back to us and buy slurry and barge. So if that's the kind of thinking, let's think militarily here, forget the science of this stuff. So, anyway, I really feel that maybe it's time to listen to the owners down there. A few, a few are home here, and I'll leave that up to the chairwoman here.
Ian, are we in agreement to open this public work session, this joint work session, to the public? Thank you, Ian. At this time, anyone from the audience that would like to speak, if you could come forward to the microphone, please, welcome.
My name is, ooh, hello. I have a loud voice. My name is Frank O'Brien. I am a pod owner of Tara's Family Pub on Mattoony Beach Road. This is obviously an important issue to our community. I can assure you, it's an important issue to me personally, to my property, to my business, and to the employees who work there. I am not certain what the long-term is, but Mr. Feeney, I was going to make the same comment. There's a photo on the wall here where, it was lovely, and people were playing volleyball and on the beach. That water comes up to our building. It truly, other than perhaps at a, at a moon-low tide, you might have something, but other than that, there really isn't much beach left. I do not know what the long-term solution is. I hope that between the town council, the coastal council, and town management, a solution is found. The question that I have, and it may, is for the staff, and this may not be where I would get an answer, but I'm told, and I've read, that temporary wooden structure will be allowed to protect us while a long-term solution is being sought. My question is, would the staff consider something other than a timber structure? My concerns, well, ironically, today I was at the Rhode Island Emergency Management Conference up in Warwick. One of the, and I know there were millions, and I believe some of my neighbors may talk about some others, but there was one I just happened to see today. And it would be a temporary structure. It basically is similar to a gabian basket, for anyone that's, it's a metal basket. It has a recyclable inert fiber liner, and basically, it has no bottom to it. You put these on the beach, you fill them with sand. I've done the calculations on the cost of the sand, the cost of the baskets, and a guesstimate on the installation. The 675 feet that we're talking about could temporarily be protected for... The 675 feet that we're talking about could temporarily be protected for about $20,000. I spoke to, to the sales guy there and I said, well, I was thinking if I did it, if I could do it, I would probably double up two rows and he said, you don't necessarily have to, but that clearly would be better, it'd be stronger. So for $40,000, we could cover, we could temporarily protect the 675 feet. At the time that coastal, hopefully someone comes up with an answer long-term and I'm told I have to remove these temporary structures. I, I don't, I take them up, I take them out. To install them, I need no heavy equipment on the beach. To remove them, I need no heavy equipment on the beach. The sand, the approved sand that would have been in them as ballast and weight would be remaining there, it is beach sand that would be inside it. And then frankly, I would have a demolition and/or disposal cost associated with removing timbers. These baskets would at least have some residual value to me. So in the short run, it's a whole lot less expensive. I think it's aesthetically better, if that matters, than wooden timbers. And I, I just think without having to use heavy equipment and having some residual value to the remains is very attractive to me. And I hope that the staff will allow this type of temporary structure in addition to or in lieu of timber structure. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Melnick, I'm from nine two nine Mattoon Beach Road on the, right by Mary Carpenter's wall. So I'm the one who's kind of best off on all my neighbors. And I have something that I found that I'd love to share with, with you guys and with What it is, is essentially a system that's meant to capture sand. And while we dance around this and start talking about all these temporary things, which we do need because you're only 12 feet away, one storm away from losing this road, this is something more of, let's try to get some beach back. Let's try to rebuild it somehow. This will give you some storm protection, they're relatively cheap, the company is willing to really bargain with us because they want to get their, them in here. I did talk to John on it, he thought it was an intriguing idea, interesting idea, maybe he wants to share a little on this. But it's a great testbed area for doing some experimentations, as you were saying. We have to do something. Nothing's being done here. We're going to lose these areas, you're going to lose the houses, you're going to lose the road. And I don't understand why you don't care. We got to do something. And we're willing to help out, we're not asking for charity, but you know, something pleased done. The other thing I wanted to mention is when you talk about bringing sand in after you, you dredge it, why can't you just use a barge instead of trucking it? Just stick it on a barge, bring it over and dump it. I would think that would be a lot more cost-effective, especially if you're only going from Point, Point Judith or from Charleston Beachway, put it on a barge, bring it over and dump it in there. If we get a few years out of it, maybe it buys us time to figure out something else. Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you. I'm Jane Austin, here on behalf of Save the Bay, just to offer some comments on the very significant issues raised here in this case. We're urging the state through CRMC to try to pursue a balanced strategy for addressing both coastal erosion and sea level rise that does preserve Rhode Island's beautiful and natural shorelines as much as possible and also recognizes and deals with the many drawbacks of attempting to armor the coastline. While seawalls may protect temporary, provide temporary protection for some property owners, they do have significant long-term negative impacts as well. And we've heard and discussed some of them tonight. Individual efforts to protect property tend to exacerbate the problem for adjoining properties. And we've already seen some of those impacts on the road itself and neighboring properties. Hardening shorelines results in the loss of the natural and the dynamic boundary between the land and the sea, the boundary that's very important for both habitat and marine productivity. Public beach access is compromised and eventually lost altogether with the erosion of beaches in front of shoreline protection structures. Hardened shorelines encroach on the public trust and a problem that is made worse and only going to get worse with sea level rise. The stakes at issue are significant and deserving of full public participation. And there's a danger in these temporary solutions. Coastal resources are damaged in the process, public and private resources are expended and long-term, non-hardening solutions may be undermined or lost. The impulse to protect private property owners is understandable. We share that, we, we are not underestimating the challenges and this is particularly, I know felt very deeply by local officials. But we also have to be aware of the tendency to conflate a collection of individual private interests or local interests with the broad public interests. And localities may make assumptions regarding removal of existing hardened areas, road access, you know, make assumptions about whether you can move or not move utilities that if you took the whole problem, looked at it from a much broader perspective, you would recognize that we have to think on a longer term, bigger geographic scale and larger scale issue. The state's existing coastal management policies have been developed with substantial public input for nearly 40 years. The CRMC water types and the restrictions on the barrier beaches and for the salt ponds reflect a careful balancing already of the public's interests and values. When we're thinking here about this 670 yards of Mattoon, we have to think also about that in the context of the Rhode Island shoreline. We have hardened urban areas with densely populated areas, we have hundreds of miles of coastal roads and areas where we're going to need structural protection. Protecting wastewater treatment plants, protecting our, our, you know, our electric facilities, you know, basic, basic infrastructure in the state. We're talking a lot here about, you know, implicit assumptions about where public resources, how much are going to be available and where we're going to use them. This kind of a conversation has to be embedded in that kind of a, in that kind of a discussion. The Rhode Island constitution has special protections for the shoreline in terms of the people's right to enjoy and freely exercise, the rights of the fishery, protections of the shore. We have to recognize that efforts to protect and help private property owners to regain property that was lost through historical erosion or storm events does in fact convey the state's property interest in tidelands and submerged lands along the coastline to those private parties. So we have to think about it in that broader context as well. Sea level rise is reshaping Rhode Island shoreline and the dynamic boundary between public and private. The council has to be doubly cautious about allowing construction of structures that will alter or diminish the rights of the public to enjoy and use the state's beaches in this Save the Bay has made it clear in our earlier testimony and correspondence regarding the temporary essence that we feel the, the mechanisms that have been put in place really do not have a solid legal basis at this point. The workshops provide an opportunity for members of the council and for members of the, of the CRMC and of the town council to talk about ideas, to raise hypothetical possibilities, but it is no substitute for either considering formal permits or formal policy changes. The policy's a daunting one, but the council's formal role-making and special area management plan would provide robust tools for developing a comprehensive strategy that would recognize that this is not an issue that's just going to affect Mattoon. This stretches from Westerly to Watch Hill. When we're thinking about the kinds of solutions, it's not going to be sorted out just in this room, it's going to take the input, you know, the kind of expert advice and expertise that's been, that CRMC has been a hallmark, actually, their policy development for the years. Something like the Ocean Stamp where you bring substantial federal, state and local, local resources, you consider the full range of options, you get full stakeholder input. And ultimately, that's what's going to have to be driving any long-term policymaking for this area. I'm extreme, the members of the council and this town council have done a tremendous job of trying to raise the options, but this kind of a setting of a open kind of town hall meeting, kind of ad hoc policy development where the public and Save the Bay and, and other groups are able to kind of sit on the side and listen to kind of discussions and potential negotiations between property owners, the town, CRMC, if this might be possible, if that might be possible, is simply not a substitute for kind of the formal policymaking that this body should make in this kind of a context where we actually can see what is being considered. The public has a, has a sense of what, what the numbers are. People have been asking the right questions, but clearly a decision can't be made until we know what these options are, what their costs would be, what the resources that would be brought into play would be. And I think part of the, part of the frustration here is that up until now, there's been a resistance to kind of taking and giving that full, broad, robust consideration of what the real nature of the problem is down here, how you would begin to tackle this, looking at what the precedents are and what the, that you're going to be faced with. And be able to think about things like, we might have to move the road. I mean, Dr. Boothroyd, you know, was, gave some pretty straightforward advice about what, what the constraints and what the real options are in, in front of the council. How do you, how do you address this? If you're willing to think about, okay, let, maybe we have to move the road, maybe we have to think long-term. What is the, what is the full range of, of resources that we could bring to this? And I think Save the Bay would encourage you to make sure that you start by taking a hard look, not just at this 670 yards, because we've got a lot longer coastline than that, all facing the same threats. And that a piecemeal decision here isn't going to, is going to potentially set very negative, negative precedence could ultimately lead to a tremendous waste of public resources and, and missing actually some solutions that might have some, some long-term benefits for coastal communities all along Rhode Island's coast. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kathy Fogarty.
Jane?
Yes.
I have to ask you, like your books, by the way, let's bring some sense and sensibility to this. When you talk about getting together and around the table and what would be your timeframe for this to roll out? How long do you think that we have to sit around a table to kind of come up with these long-range plans? Because we've been trying to get something going here for 15 years. So, and, and the coastal resources worked with us on, on things along that line. So we're at a point where, as you can see from the maps, we're very close to the road being breached. So we can sit and talk and keep going on like this and looking for long-term, that's fine, but we need to do something now. So what, what would be your timeframe? I'm just interested.
Well, I think in the short term, we've heard tonight that burritos offer actually kind of a short to medium-term kind of option. Then I think the question is, what kind of assumptions are you willing to make? It may be that you're not going to be able to armor this, you don't consider armoring the shore. You look at some, at perhaps removing some of the armoring that you have so that you can let some of the regular beach dynamics keep going, create a more favorable context for beach nourishment, all of those kinds of issues.
And again, how long, how long do you think that would take to have that whole process go through? It's, it's a question of really time here. And I, I just think that that's just so long-term. That's something we can discuss, but short-term, burritos, you know, might be an option, I don't know if, if the people who have the buildings think that's going to be the, the best policy or best thing for them in place. But again, long-term, we have to do something sooner than, than, you know, Save the Bay, I understand, great, fine institution, have done wonders for the, for the bay. But, you know, again, we're under a serious situation. It, it's, it's serious to us as a council. It's very frustrating to say, wait, think about more long-term, we have to do something. I don't want to do anything to hurt the environment, but I have to do something as a councilperson. So I, I got to protect that road. There's no, there's no choice about moving this road back and moving it back, we don't, we don't have that option. It, we don't, we don't. And people keep trying to throw that back into the thing, we, we've discussed this as a council several different times and people come and keep wanting to bring it up. We just don't have the time. So I mean, the sitting around and talking, this is a, this is a process that's been going on for such a long period of time, we really have, we're up against the wall right now. So I appreciate what you're saying, I really truly do. And I want to be as environmentally less impactful as I, as we possibly can here, but we have to do something. And, you know, I just, I, I just, it's very frustrating to sit here because as I've been sitting on the council for nine years, this has been an issue that's been going on here. And I, I just can't, I just don't want to hear about waiting any longer. I want something done now. And burritos might not be the, might not be the issue for some people, but we've got to do something. And it's just, it's very aggravating and it, even for the new council members who are on here to just say that it's a beachfront and just let it go, I mean, you might as well not talk about any of the properties because it's a beachfront, it's a natural thing. If, if let the science go, beaches are protected constitutionally, why are we even here? We'll just let that, the whole Rhode Island slip into the ocean. I mean, we have to do something. It, it's just, it's, it's just maddening to sit here and, and hear this. I have to say, I'm just, I'm very frustrated. I'm sorry, I have to...
Yes, I can understand that...
Waiting and waiting and waiting, I, I can't, I can't.
I think the Ocean Stamp took about 18 months, the Metro Stamp was about a two-year period. I would have to defer to the, to the staff and the council in terms of the length of time that it would take to, to look at something like the salt pond, you know, relooking at the salt pond special area management plan. But the benefit of that is that it brings in experts, it brings in, you know, a wider range of, of resources and it also lets local, local cities and towns actually think about, model and consider alternatives and assumptions that they haven't been willing to question, but which they may have to if they're really going to protect their communities over the long run.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just make one comment to Jane. I have a list of some of the comments that was generated by Save the Bay at the last meeting up in Providence. And I do believe respectfully that this is the proper forum to have this. There's nobody that knows South Kingstown and what, what we're going through here. So I believe that this town forum is absolutely the best forum and I applaud the efforts of former Chair Mike Tocoin for suggesting this meeting. This is one of many meetings and there's nothing like hearing it straight from the source of the businesses. You also make reference that this town council's main function is, well, not main function, but protecting the businesses. We have water pipes, we have people, we have employment, we have disastrous situation with emergency medical service people not being able to get there if that road is breached. So this goes far beyond the capacity that we're dealing with. So I believe that this is the proper forum. Thank you.
Further questions here at the table? Further questions from the audience or from Ian's table?
Sorry, I just have a quick question. Has anybody looked into the fact, when this road breaches, what happens where that water goes? It's going to go behind the road and it's going to flood out all that area. I mean, the impact on that is going to be huge. And again, I'll defer, so it was Carol, right? Her frustration in, you're going to let the properties go first, you're going to let all that happen first and the breach happen, then you're going to do something about it? Doesn't quite make sense. I'm sure 500 people aren't going to be happy with it or 500 homeowners. And I'm sure your taxes won't be happy when they're gone.
My name's Mike McKenna. I live at 1044 Mattoon Beach Road. My wife and I, we walk in front of Browning Beach and those burritos every single weekend year-round. That damage that you see there, I took those pictures. That damage happened in a small storm this spring. It was amazing, it had a unique wind direction, it was very unusual and it just, it didn't do anything in front of the 675 feet where if it had been a few degrees more, it would have done a lot of damage. But because of the wind direction and it wasn't that big a storm, you can see what it did and it did that overnight. So imagine if that was a big storm with a big hurricane, what that could do. So that's why I say burritos, they're not, they're not that good of a solution. We, as I say, we've been walking in front of them for 20 years. We've watched them put those there, we've watched them try other solutions and each one hasn't worked. We've watched them try other solutions, and each one hasn't worked. This has worked better than most, I will say that. But, it's still, you watch one storm, and, and we're not talking hurricanes, we're talking winter, winter storms, just come and they'll wipe it out overnight. And then, luckily, there's not, there hasn't been two in a row, if and when there are ever, because they don't have the time or energy to be able to fix those with a winter ocean, because, because they just can't get, get at it. So, in, in addition, that 675 feet that you're talking about with those eight or nine parcels, that has two businesses that employ 85 people. In this economy, you're going to wipe out 85 people? And in addition to that, our house, which is past that, now, if you breached right there, I'd love for you people to go down and do a site visit there. Bring you up on top of his porch and show you an aerial of where it would breach. There's a marsh behind there. And when you go down into that marsh, it looks like you're below sea level there. If it ever breached there, you're going to have a gap like Galilee, and we're going to need boats and ferries to get across until a bridge is built. I don't think it's going to be a temporary breach, because when it breaches there and it goes down and into that marsh, you're not going to be able to stop it. It's just going to be tidal. That'll, that'll be, that'll be ocean. So, that's what I have to say.
Make your mic.
Good evening. My name's Lauren Russo, and I'm here on behalf of the Rhode Island chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. And we'd just like to make a formal comment on the proposed guidelines and solutions for the Mattoonik erosion issue. So, for those of you that don't know, the Surf Rider Foundation is an international network of over 50,000 volunteers who are working to protect our ocean's waves and beaches. Specifically in Rhode Island, our chapter also focuses on water quality and public access. The Surf Rider Foundation recognizes that beaches are unique coastal environments with ecological, recreational, and economic value. Further, the Surf Rider Foundation supports coastal research and science-based management of coastal resources to support, or to promote sustainable, long-term planning and preservation of beach environments. This includes advocating for the landward retreat of structures from our dynamic shorelines, and where landward retreat is not feasible, certain beach nourishment projects may be considered. Under no circumstances does the Surf Rider Foundation support the installation of stabilization or sand retention structures along the coastline. Such structures can temporarily protect coastline development but have no place in beach preservation, and ultimately result in further loss of our beaches and increased erosion. We agree with the staff report that the construction of a permanent structure along the specific parcels will accelerate beach loss and eliminate beach fringe, preventing lateral shoreline access for surfers, kayakers, and kiteboarders. As more beach area is scoured away, safety becomes an important issue for these water recreationalists who need a safe place to exit when the waves kick up. In fact, the Coast Guard has been called to the area on numerous occasions to rescue surfers caught offshore. Loss of dry land would also impede these rescue efforts. Not only is water safety an issue, but Deep Hole and Mary Surf Break are some of the best the East Coast has to offer. Surf schools, kayakers, experienced surfers, all treasure and come to these popular breaks. As sea level rises, coastal storms will become more intense, and the bill environment will be challenged. But saving threatened structures should not come at a cost of losing the resources that Rhode Islanders have come to love, such as our local beaches and ocean access. So, we recognize that this is a time-sensitive and precedent-setting issue, and long-term solutions will involve compromise. The Rhode Island chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation would like to see and be engaged in a transparent and open public process that protects our natural resources and supports our current coastal regulations. Thank you.
Lauren?
Yes.
I know at that meeting up in Providence, there was also somebody, I believe it was Nathan Vinaterra, who also spoke, and the comment was made after he made his comment about protecting, you know, when he spoke specifically about Deep Hole. If that, if that road is breached, there'll be not even access to get to Deep Hole. So, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that area down there, if you're a resident.
Yeah. As long as we're, as long as the break's still there, and we can get in the water, we can get there.
That's a good.
That is all the space that town beaches have access to the ocean. Nice to know the areas that we have on the Atlantic. That would be lost as far as access. We're all the way down into the houses and businesses. Snowfall, that would be a problem. We fixed it a couple of bad storms ago. That was a break down to the beach, and we walked down to the Mattoonik, the Seapiche. So, it's another public access area that is also, we're talking about the bad world creatures. We're talking about the bear cops. So, we're talking about four public access areas, and that one location is just a bad.
Thank you. Yes?
Did somebody from the audience also comment about Deep Hole, and if they would like to come to the microphone and make that statement?
I would like to speak.
If you could come to the mic, and I didn't quite hear the comment that you made about Deep Hole and access to that.
If, as I surmised, this is Mike McKenna again, if, as I surmised, the road breached, and it went down into that gully, as you said, all those public accesses will not be available anymore. The only way they will be able to get to the beach and surf, and I have surfed since 1963, would be at the town beach, and they'd have to paddle a quarter to a half a mile to get to the beaches, to get to the waves. So, now, I understand there is an access problem because of what has happened over the years with that 675 feet. There is no beach there anymore. Essentially, every now and then, you'll have sand that'll wash in and wash out. Nine times out of 10, you look there, and it's just all rocks. It's all gr- it's all like this. It's, it's, it's not a place you would want to be on a beach. It, and in terms of, surfers cannot access that anymore, unfortunately, because of what, what happened with, there were a couple of houses that got lost in that area a few years ago. But, once again, if that breaches, and it's a permanent breach, there will be no access. It will be an island practically, it will be a peninsula really, but will be, will be an island down past us. And once again, I want to talk about the economic impact. I do not have a dog in this fight. I do not have any employment or any interest in the two restaurant bars that, that are right down the street from my house, except for the fact that neighbors, friends, and relatives work at them, because they are an employment engine. And in the tourist industry, if you could have seen how packed it was this past weekend, that's all money coming from Connecticut, New York, and New Jersey that's coming into Rhode Island and spending money here. And one of the things that they like when they come down there are those two places. That's why they're coming down there. They're not coming down there for the beach, because there isn't any stinking beach there anymore. That's the truth. I mean, there just isn't. The town beach is nice, but in front of those beaches, it's just, I mean, occasionally, you'll have a beach there, occasionally. Then it'll be gone. If you go down to Browning Beach where those burritos are, there is an old septic tank that, that storm that wiped out those burritos, there's an old septic tank, it's about this big around, it's steel. It's about that much above the sand right now. After that storm, it was this much above the sand. So, five feet came back in, but we still had a net loss, as we have each, each storm that goes through. So, you know, there is, we are having permanent erosion, but there is that much give and take of the sand. It's just simply amazing. I mean, my wife and I walk the beach on a weekend, and on a Saturday, there'll be rocks everywhere on the beach. The next day, we walk on the beach, and there's no wave action, it's all sand. It's just simply amazing. One day, it'll be like walking on cement. The next day, we'll go in this far, our feet will go in. It's just, you know, the ebb and flow of sand is amazing on that part. But, you know, in, that 675, and once again, also, that 675 feet of quote "natural beach", well, man-made structure is on both sides of that. For, for the half a mile, three-quarters of a mile of that, it's all man-made, except for, so the minority of that area is sandwiched in between man-made structure. Once again, I'd love to have you people go down and do a field survey trip down there, just to see what we're talking about. Anyway, that's, once again.
Fran O'Brien again. I don't have firsthand knowledge of how all this stuff works. I've tried to educate myself somewhat. Recently, I read a book, it was called Waves and Beaches. The author was a PhD geologist from the university, I'm sorry, the Colorado School of Mines. In the first chapter, it said that if there are soft headlands, and Dr. Boothroyd may or may not agree with this, but if there are soft headlands, that in time, nature will look to flatten those out. If there is hard structure, nature will scour in between them. That is, I believe, exactly what is happening. As Mike just said, there's hard structure, man-made, either side of us. And this, that's, you know, what's happening there. So, I, I just think there's a reason why 675 feet is affected and needs to be. You know, if, if we had let nature take its course in history, then I might fall, you know, say, yes, we should let nature take its course. But, I don't think we have, and it may be too late for that. And just something else, you know, hearing Save the Bay, who I support sincerely, and Surf Riders, I guess I just want to be on the record. I was born within 100 feet of the ocean on the east-facing shore of Point Judith. That house is still in my family. I keep a sailboat at Dutch Harbor in Jamestown. I've done transoceanic passages. People may love it as much as no one in this room loves the ocean more than I do. I reject the premise that because you have a business, you can't love the ocean. I just reject that premise. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kevin Finnegan. I'm the owner of the Ocean Mist. I like to, that point's a good point. I'd like to come up here as a citizen sometimes, but because I own a business, sometimes, like, you know, people, I have, you know, it's money-oriented, and it's not. I, I think I said at the last meeting, get rid of the Ocean Mist, you still have to put a seawall. If there's an exception to the rule, on the entire south shore of South County, South, South County starts at the Harbor Refuge, you have state property all the way to Mattoonik proper, and right where Mattoonik proper starts, it's hard structured all the way around, or man, or naturally structured with the cobble reef, back to man-made structures, and it ends right at the beginning in that 60, 675 feet. Then it starts up again and ends at a town beach. So, if you look at it as a bigger picture, you have one big massive seawall, either man-made or naturally, except for that 675 feet. And we're paying for it. You know, and it's just in a really critical, critical area, because the water is there, the water line's there, all that stuff. If you close that off, then you could bring into play Mr. Boothroyd's knowledge, Janet's knowledge, CRMC's knowledge, get URI involved. Mattoonik must generate like $10 million a season in property tax, tourism, rentals, surfers, kayaks. And just to add, I don't think anyone in this room isn't for surfers, a- a- any individual people here. You know, I lived on the beach my whole life. I got a place in Puerto Rico. I like to surf. I live the beach. I, like, I watch it, you know what I mean? So, I don't think anybody in this room wants to hurt the beach. But that is the only exception to the rule right now, is that little 675 feet. You close it off, and then we sit here for hours and 15 more years and talk about beach replenishment, what we can do, how we can do it, because it can be done. If you get his knowledge, his, your knowledge, CRMCs, the University of Rhode Island, and $10 million, Steve's got to help me on this, you got $3.5 million in property tax, I might be missing some numbers here, you got rentals, you got surfers, kayakers, fishermen, tourists, we just, you know, people come from not only Mattoonik, but all of Rhode Island, out into Rhode Island, to come to Mattoonik, the village of Mattoonik. It's like a little national treasure, or town treasure. It's a national park that happens to have a few businesses, some residents, and invest in that 675 feet, and it will come back to you quadrupled. I think it was, it was Fran that said, you put a dollar into a national park, you get $7 back, or was it Senator LeWright House that said that? It was in the report. If you put money into a beach, you get $333 back for every dollar put in. It's over. This is like 15 years for a business owner. I'm sitting here. If I had to make the, you know, I'm not knocking anyone, they're right. Surf Riders are right, the towns are right, you're all right. But, all you've got to do is close off that 675 feet, because the entire south shore of South Kingston, and Mattoonik is the hard structure part, and you go west, you go to Town Beach, all the way to Green Hill, and that's the end of South Kingston. So, everyone can kind of semi-retreat, go up a little higher, you know, move and weave, wiggle. That's where you get the beach replenishment back. They've got time. That 675 feet has no time, absolutely no time. You're going to have a breach there, like Michael said. It's not going to be a breach. It's going to be a breach that's going to, like when they opened the pond, that crab pond, they open that pond, it just goes, it opens up. Isn't that, is that's going to be?
Kevin, I have a disagree.
You know, it's, it's, this is all, you know, like, I hate, you know, I'm not knocking no one, but I can't, sometimes I want to get mad at Mr. Boothroyd, or the CRMC, or somebody, because they're right, but they're, like, it's, put the wall up. It's not going to affect the surfers, it's not going to affect beach access, because there isn't any. The surfers have been, like, running through private property for 30 years. I was one of them. You know, so they, and I love Surf Rider. I love what they do on a bigger picture, but individual surfers, like, believe it or not, and this is a fact, this is the least help I get from, is surfers. And coming from the Ocean Mist, that's supposedly a surf bar, it's like you get zero help. You know, Surf Riders as a whole is a very, you know, a very good thing, you know, save the oceans, clean the water. In Puerto Rico, they're saving, you know, reefs and all sorts of things. But, that's all good conversation. You can't talk about that no more. You have to close off the last link on the entire south shore of South Kingston, and that's that 675 feet. It has, that's it. There's no other discussion here. There's no more, like, 15 years, another coming up, the science. It's, you don't have the time. You close that off, and then you got the time. Beach replenishment, you know, more studies. You know, Mr. Boothroyd's published papers with other people. I guess when you publish a paper, you know, other people can discuss it, right or wrong. You know, and maybe come up with some solutions, because they're positively the solutions. You know, like Colin's been underwater for 100 years. So, that's it. You know, you've got to close this wall off, you really do. So.
I'm going to come back to the table with Council, Councilman Jim O'Neill.
Tough to follow Kevin's eloquence, because he's called it as it is. Economically, everyone here in the council's discussed this. This has a tremendous multiplier effect down here. You've got to keep that in mind. If you're going to abandon us, you might as well talk to Governor Chafee and give us more of the sales tax revenues, meals tax revenues, more hotel tax revenues, because we earn it on our own. We get less and less money from the state all the time. And yet, that's the only growing part of the economy. I wish you would remember that. The only growing part of Rhode Island's economy is the tourism dollar. Meals tax, hotel tax, just look it up, it's online, you can do that. That's our lifeblood down here. As to the Surf Riders, wonderful group, we appreciate it, but they really missed the mark on this one. How'd they miss the mark? If we lose that road and these businesses and these homes, there will be, not be a place in town for them to park. The Town Beach will be full. Moonstone, you have seven spots. Green Hill Beach, I think we have seven spots. There's no place to park. So, we lose the access, we lose Deep Hole. They just didn't pay attention to this particular area. Kevin called it the 675 feet. And you know, it's about time we got the Army Corps of Engineers on our side, too. If any of you have followed the last few months, the floods in the Midwest, record, what, 50, 60-year high water marks, 100-year high water marks in some places. The Army Corps, as far as I know, along the Mississippi, Missouri River, from numbers I saw, have about 700 miles of various forms of levees. You saw what they had to do down Arkansas, Louisiana, and Mississippi. They had to flood people's homes out. They had to make tough decisions. Homes were lost. Farmland, millions of acre-feet of farmland lost here or pushed aside, people out of business for the year. They had to make tough decisions to blow up some of those levees. We're talking about 675 feet here of a com- We're talking about 675 feet here of a community that you can't step to the plate and help us, this is ridiculous. And if the Army Corps gives us a hard time here, because we should hold larger public meetings, I think it's time they came on board. If we got them on board in the Charlestown Breachway, there's no reason why they can't help us, maybe that's slurring and barge network and compressors offshore with some tugboats and bring us in some sand. But to think that they're not, that they couldn't be an advocate here, when, look at what they went through in the Mississippi River, they should be an advocate with us here, it should work with us, and, and help us redefine where this high water mark is. Let us work a little lower from this wooden structure to possibly try some sand replenishment ideas, which Dr. Boothroyd and others feel we need to bring in the sand to buy us some time. No one's arguing about the world climate, high water marks, record high levels of sea gr, you know, the sea heights, sea, you know, inundation here. We're not arguing that, but we are bringing a place here where we might be able to get ourselves 10 to 25 years, and maybe, maybe if we could get some sand back, with some long-term thinking here from all these parties, we could do it. So I think we should be partners and not think of the Army Corps as anything but an advocate for us, an advocate for CRMC, and you guys need to help us out here and say, listen, work with that wall, but also too, we're gonna give you some lateral room here to try to work with that long-term solution on a sand replenishment basis, only forget about this huge steel wall and, you know, boardwalk that could be there, but start working with us and help us out here, because we've got a lot of great thinkers down here, and these, a lot of these folks are from this area, and we can do this, we, we just need your go-ahead. You know, we don't need sympathy here. My, my God, it's, I've been down on the shoreline for 60-plus years, I'm tired of sympathy, and, but this is a community, and as I told you at that last meeting, this isn't somebody where you've had to dig your, you know, feet in here, and somebody that put a McMansion on some barrier beach and is just battling, gets his flood control money back, or the flood insurance money back, and continuing to want a McMansion down there. This is a community, and as I mentioned to you, almost 540 homes, half of them seasonal, and yes, probably $2, $3 million of tax money, but we need your support here, we need your advocacy, we need your go-ahead, and we need you to allow us to do some thinking here, and allow these eight folks here to move forward here, out into the water, or out at the shoreline, maybe a combination of average tide, to try to bring some sand ideas back. That's what we need from you. So hopefully, that's what you got out of tonight's meeting. And I think Senator Sizniewski would like to speak.
Senator Sue Sizniewski.
Thank you, I'm the chair, and welcome to the CRMC. Just, I used to be a member of the CRMC, they were speaking like this, but first of all, I want to give credit to the Town staff and CRMC staff, also to Governor Chafee and staff, and the local mayor, where they had come in a short period of time, first meeting, there was a lot of things brought up. Tom, I can work with the CRMC for 15 years on this issue, a lot of that stuff, if you're here again, your dedication. But I think you've heard all that, we've heard from Save the Bay, and I think sand is an excellent idea. We know that, you've seen, as Jane said, of the ocean sand, the metro sand, it's an excellent idea, I think that is a good long-term option, I don't think there's a regular, yeah, long-term. But, but that probably would've been a better idea 15 years ago, but I'm not encouraging that, because in some sense, I am not, very efficient, very conscious, I matter, but policy decisions are probably made 15 years ago, and didn't include the area in far as a special mandate. Yeah, it's, it's true, the staff is very, very busy, the council members are very busy in the years, the day-to-day regulation, the maintenance, it's nobody's fault, it's the staff. The ocean sand was a success, as we all know. And, but what was the driver behind that? Those leaderships behind it, the former governor and his, his leadership for the oil leader of Menendez, that was really the driver for that. The staff and the CRMC have talked about creating ocean sand for 20 years, but there was a member of that leadership drive that had been done, and I have to give credit to the former governor for that, and to the staff. But here we are in an emergency situation, no question about it, Tom knows it, EMA knows it, the governor knows it, legislature knows it, CRMC knows it. I'm wondering if, I'm not holding it, but maybe if we take any negative water from our governor, we direct the CRMC to move forward, either on a sand or, or a short-term, I don't know, I, I'm a little frustrated myself right now, what the next step needs to be. Again, I, I want to credit the governor and staff for allowing these beings, you know, to go forward to that, or appointing new members to the council. But let's face it, the road breaches down there, town doesn't have the right to pay for property loss of life, it would probably be the state that went ahead and did, I don't think it doesn't have a loss of life within the property, but it's the state possibility. And I, I just do get frustrated when I see these landowners and property owners on the table, I don't know if there's been something holding back the CRMC staff for years, I just don't know, I don't, I'm not blaming anyone, because they're all good people, they have great ideas. I just think it's about these policy decisions to, you know, maybe even the statute, I've wrestled too much here, maybe the statute of the CRMC, maybe it's antiquated, maybe it needs to change, but we have an emergency situation, and that is we don't, long-term, it's not gonna be long-term, but I think the meetings, it seems like we're on our own, and I don't think anyone wants to see those long in the ocean, at least I don't think, there are some people who do, but I don't think we do. And now, once again, they've spent a couple of hours, actually, on this issue, they've given years of, years of this, as well as the staff, and I agree with Kevin, pretty I agree with Sam, is this, is this a short-term done? And whether it's good technology, it was mentioned, and long-term, maybe it's a sand plan. And I, and I, I'm a little hesitant, but I'm not hesitant to say what I'm saying here, it's just a question, more for guidance, not criticism, it's more for guidance as we evolve, what we should do.
I'm gonna open it one more time, Ian, for questions from the public. Questions here at our table, Town Council, Carol Hagan-McIntyre.
I'll be brave, and I hope I'm not redundant, but again, I mean, we've been advised by CRMC to apply for emergency ascent for a cata, in case of a catastrophic storm, and in that event, you would allow construction of a hard shoreline protection structure. Now, I have to say again, why do we have to wait till that catastrophic event? If that's the best plan, why can't we do it now? We're almost there. It's not if these, this, these properties go into the ocean, it's, it's when, it's when will the road breach? So I just keep going back to that, if you're gonna allow it at some point in time, and all these conversations about saving this 675 feet from Save the Bay, and the surfers, it's gonna go, it's gonna be gone if we don't do anything, so. And then you're gonna have a, you're gonna have a wall right where the road is, or some kind of hard shoreline protection structure. So why are we waiting? I mean, and as Kevin Finnegan said, tie up, you know, close the gap, there are huge stone walls on either side of this 675 feet, I mean, I, I don't know if there's stone walls or huge boulders piled up on both sides, and that's causing this to just get eaten away, and that's where the road is gonna breach, and I don't understand why it's okay once everything goes into the ocean to put up the hard structure, but now that we're 10 feet away, we can't put up the hard structure, if that's the best idea. Thank you.
Tony.
Counselor, I was trying to send, I've been looking through my documents to see where the CRMC gave that impression or directed the, whether it's a catastrophic storm, a hard structure, something like that, is that, that decision's not committed, is that a lot of, what's the staff's about?
Can I have some more to carry?
Councilman, what, as Mr. Alfred pointed out in his initial comments, what the two staffs are working on are solutions to when a structure can be built. One of those solutions is in the event of a catastrophic event, such as a storm that wipes out the structures, that there is already pre-permitted the ability for the town to come in and build a revatment along that area. That's if a catastrophic storm comes through. The second, or additional solution, is other solutions to look at the mitigation of this area, and that is policy changes, that is, looking at other ways to protect the structures that would also protect the road. So it's not just the one, wait for a catastrophe to come through and have a, have the town come in and build a revatment, that's one solution that we can put in our back pocket and be ready to go, should that happen, while we're looking at all the other solutions.
Can I ask you a question? But in the first two paragraphs, you said that county actually refers to as a basic front.
Mm-hmm.
I thought that the gradation would cut out the technical road, that was something that we see when it's more, it's changing now.
The, the initial first segment, yes, but the longer, and the dotted line would be when the catastrophe comes through to do the rest of the shoreline, that's correct. We are, and the two staffs are working at that, the first westerly section, if you will, right now, that is correct.
And the only reason we're working on that is there's no structures there, and we're within 10 feet of the, of the wall itself. And, and I think that one of the more important maps there is, that's a topography map, the second one in, it says Mattoonik Lotus, Locus. You can see where the breach would occur, it would all go into that salt marsh. Once it gets into the salt marsh, it ends up inundating both Seaweed Cove and Seagull Cove. That's where, where the bigger problems come in, because now you're gonna be impacting those salt ponds in terms of the salinity value of, of the water that's coming into what's there now, and which, which we're gonna have difficulty being able to address. I think environmentally, there's also issues that would be, be associated with that. But that breach, if it were to occur, that's where the low point is, based on the topography that's there, it would go to that salt marsh, and then it would really go into Seagull Cove.
It seems that, at this point, in all of the past, I'm afraid we're ever on shot, I'm afraid of the most discussions that we've had about, for many years, that have been lots of discussions on potential solutions, possible solutions. But at, at this point, what we need to do is, you know, the town has to submit an application to do something. We've heard with a lot of our discussions, that there are some methods, considerations acceptable to CRMC at this point, because there was one, burritos, there were things that we would probably favorably consider, but I think we need to get an application in the works that we can consider, you know, how we want to move forward, especially for the year term, and then follow up with the sand process, to get better research, and I think, say, the base, the bigger picture, the total coastline, and working from, I sat in, I think, every meeting, almost every meeting on the ocean sand process, and it was amazing, we put some resources to it, and it was awesome to do, like, we got, we worked very well, so that's a good solution long-term. But I will suggest that there are things that can be done now, and the priority process on the spot, somebody got up and saying, I would like to do this, and allow us to work on that, which, from where I sit, that's why I speak.
Tony, do you mind if I just go to the town manager? I'm sorry, Ian, I don't want to step on your toes.
No, I was gonna say, I think that, as I started out tonight, we were looking at three different options of dealing with the issues. After the discussions, we found that two of those would not be viable, and that resources would be wasted working with that. So that's why we are looking at that third component, that of the sand plan amendment, and working with the staff. That needs to be, be completed now as a formal application. But we still have to provide the application for the emergency ascent. The emergency ascent, as Janet had, had brought up, that 675 feet, really the first 200 of it need to be addressed with the, the permanent structure now, based on the conditions that exist there. And that's what would be applied, that application would not be going to the Coastal Council, it would be going to the executive director of, of the staff, of the Coastal Council. Under that, Section 180.2, I think it is, is where that authorization would, is provided in the red book.
Tony.
The last five minutes, I'm the most unlikely of the evening, I'd like to, little clarification, if you see this map, this is what you're talking about, so if you're working, you're talking about a solid red line, where the erosion has come closest to the road, and that's a photograph.
That's correct.
That's right.
Is the town planning to request permission from the executive director to build a permanent structure, where the red line is located, or?
That's correct.
So the burritos, or timbers, or any other option is not under consideration, even for that first 200 feet?
No, the, the amount of erosion that we've seen, we've seen as much on one storm of losing five to 10 feet. If we end up with the right storm, we're going to be in the road. The temporary measure is not a viable option. The other thing, in looking at that map, where that red solid line is, there's, there's stone that was there in the first place. The wall was not properly constructed, was not maintained, the wave action overlapped that stone, what it did is it pulled the stone out. So what you do have is you've got the remnants of a wall that's there, that did exist 20 years ago. That, at this point, we're not gonna put burritos on top of that stone structure there and be able to provide any viable solution. See, that's where, you know, they keep talking about the 675 feet, the problem that we have here is that it isn't an ocean beach. The 675 feet was an ocean, ocean beach, let's say, go back 50 years. The loss of a beachfront since 1939 is estimated between 100 and 120 feet in front of that 675-foot area. So what you had even 10 years ago, where there may have been an area that, that you could traverse laterally to, to walk the, the beach, doesn't exist now, because now we've got tidal action under the buildings itself. And where that, and as I, as I say, you can see the, the rubble that's left there, that rubble, right, right now, you've got the rubble, and on the street side of that rubble, you've got an empty area. So what happens is once, yes, so what happens is each time that, that we have a major storm, we've got wave action that's going right up against that beach face, and the beach face erodes. And that's, that's where the concern is, and why we would need to go to a permanent structure at this point for that area. What we're also looking at is that the 675 feet, in dealing with, with Grover and Jeff, is if there was a catastrophic event, if there was a major hurricane that hit that area, if those buildings were lost, the potential for the road breach would occur, or if the road breach occurred, we would need to have emergency powers in place to be able to get the public access. Because again, we have no way of getting to those 240 homes if we lost that road. And with all due respect to some of the speakers tonight, there's no place to relocate that road, too, based on the topography of Mattoonik. So that, what we're looking at is that we need to have an ability to be able to put a permanent structure in place to protect that road if a catastrophic event... structure in place to protect that road if a catastrophic event occurs, that's what the first application would do, it would provide us with a shoreline protection, and the alignment would be roughly on what that red line is, the dotted line would be, hopefully, something we would never have to accomplish, because if the second application, that which would provide the property owners with the ability to put hardened structures in front of their place, would preclude the need for any addition of that, of that stone structure. Now, if there's temporary measures that are between a hard and a soft improvement, such as the things that were raised earlier tonight, the, the blocks that could be filled with sand, if those are tried and they're successful, it may delay the inevitable of a hard structure, if those businesses are willing to spend the money to be able to put those temporary measures in place, those semi, semi-hard solutions, but at the same time, from, from a public safety, as public safety director, I've got a responsibility to ensure that I can provide public safety access to all of that, all of that area, you know, one of the suggestions was that, you know, hurricane plan needs to be in place to make sure the evacuations occur, well, obviously, we already have that in place, and we would, we would have the area safe for people before the storm, the question is, how do you get and use the, get back to their property after the storm?
Well, I just want to clarify real quickly, the dark red on the solid red line, you anticipate requesting permission to build immediately a hardened structure, photograph.
That is correct.
What happens to the wave action and the, the dynamics of the erosion at the end of that new structure, which you brought 200 feet closer to the building?
That's why we're hiring a marine engineer to provide the design, what, what I would assume would have to happen is that there would have to be some type of a curl at the end to tie into the existing wooden structures that are under that building that's under the dotted line.
Now, that their wooden structures, were they permitted, were they, uh?
No, and, no, and, they were not permitted, and I can't, I don't think that you can discuss those tonight, because they may be subject to a future hearing as to the, to a violation there.
Any further discussion? So Ian, what do you think? What's the next steps? Well, we would like to thank you, Ian, congratulate you, as Madam Chair, and the three new appointees, thank you, Senator Sue Siznowski, and the town staff, CRMC, especially all of the residents also that came here to speak, please keep coming forward for any future meetings, and do, do, do we have some type of a timeframe or next steps, or?
Say it again?
Yeah.
Our next step will get the applications in, and get it into the staff, and that way, that can also get up to the council, so that, that's our next step, the first step to the council will be the appointment on the engineering contract, then hopefully, within a four-week period, we'll have something before coastal staff.
Okay, with no further comments, meeting adjourned, thank you very much.